Are you on the 38 phone number?
Yeah.
No, Ally, that's me, Lady Isaacson.
Oh, okay, thank you. It's six o'clock, I'm gonna assume we are live on the video, but I will wait for IT to confirm that for me.
Ally, is this better for my audio?
Um, possibly, because we can talk some more.
You're hearing?
Yeah.
No one has ever asked me to talk some more.
Okay, thank you.
That's better. And we are live on the video.
Okay, Ally, I'm just trying to set up the camera. Give me one second. Okay. Do we have a call? I see time here, Ally Rennett, Lady Isaacson, me, one, two, three, four.
We have, oh, time is twice.
Oh.
And Moshe, are you saying?
Moshe. Shalom, M'lechum.
Uh-oh.
Okay, welcome back.
Dave here.
Dave, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a full board. Okay, Mr. Jackson, how are you? And do you have the map ready, the flag ready?
I am not in a location where I have a flag, although I remember I saved a picture of one on my iPhone, so let me see if I can find it.
Okay, Ally to the rescue. Ally has one.
Ally, you're right.
Okay. Ally, are you ready? Mr. Jackson, can we start?
Yes.
Okay, I will call the meeting to order. Let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic one nation,
Nation under God,
indivisible, with liberty and justice. And justice for all. I hear justice voice over there in the background. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, Chairman. Hello.
Hi. Okay, Ally, could you please read in the certification of compliance?
Yes, and I just wanna say, before we start, we have possibly some members who can't sit on the correspondence, so please don't jump off after our last application. Just make sure we get through to the end. Hopefully it won't be too long tonight.
We have a big, very big agenda.
And location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press and the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the township of Lakewood at least forty-eight hours in advance. The public has the right to attend this meeting, and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be available for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the Open Public Meetings Act.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern. Mr. Sibley.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Flansbrough.
Here.
Mr. Herzl.
Yep.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson.
Ally, I don't know if you called me, I'm here too.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Stern is here, and I didn't hear response from Mr. Isaacson.
I am here.
Thank you. Mr. Meyer, Mr. Ratzek.
Here.
Mr. Fuentes, and Mr. Ackerman. Thank you.
Swearing of professionals.
You swear a firm testimony before this word, whether the truth, the whole truth, or none of the truth?
Yes. Okay. Let's go on to number three, the ordinance is planning board.
Turn my screen real quick. We have two ordinances up for consideration tonight. I'm gonna take them out of order, if that's okay, since Mr. Sterns is here to answer any questions and walk the board through ordinance 2020-24, which is a Cedar Bridge development, Cedar Bridge redevelopment zone change. There is a plan amendment study that was prepared by Mr. Sterns, and he's here to prepare to walk the board through that if there's any questions. There's also a document available on the online drive which lists the proposed changes, or is the proposed ordinance that goes along with that ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Ally. Mr. Sterns, first of all, Terry, do you have anything, any comments on this ordinance?
I've taken a look at it, Chairman. I think I understand the basics, however. I am very happy to have Mr. Sterns here, since he's the author of the document, and he can talk more than I can in terms of rationale behind the changes.
Okay, so Mr. Sterns, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Mr. Jackson, do we need him to be sworn in? He's giving testimony?
No, we do not.
Okay.
Vice Council of the Board, it's not for an application, so he does not need to be under oath.
Okay, Mr. Sterns, please proceed.
You feel, through the chair before we let Tom start, this is advisory, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so we don't, this is something, the township, let's just procedurally, the township is looking for us to give our input.
And I think regardless, if we vote for it, or if we don't vote for it, the township could go ahead and vote for it, or they want our, legally they're supposed to ask for our recommendation either way before they go and make the final vote.
Right, I just wanted the board to have kind of the procedural background of what we're doing tonight.
And there is, and the attorneys could jump in, but if we vote against this, they do need a supermajority of the committee to vote for it. So we do have some sort of an input.
There are, yes, Mr. Renner is correct, there are consequences, it's part of the checks and balances. The idea is that the planning board is a body that's responsible for adopting the master plan. So the question is whether the board feels that this is inconsistent with the master plan. If the board says yes, or gives no answer, does not respond within the time period, then then the committee can act upon it. If the board says no, the committee can still approve it, but the consequence is needs a supermajority, and it must provide reasons why they are adopting it in the face of the planning board feeling it's not responsive to the master plan. But ultimately, it's the committee can adopt it regardless of what the planning board says, if they have the supermajority.
Okay, Mr. Sterns, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll just give you a real quick background on the project. Cedar Bridge has been a very successful office park. It was started as a redevelopment plan thirty years ago in nineteen ninety. I got involved around two thousand, working on the plan, the redevelopment plan as an office park. After that was approved in two thousand two, all the infrastructure was put in, all the roads and the utilities. And it's been very successful. It took a little bit, a while to get going, but there's been nine hundred thousand square feet developed there in Cedar Bridge. There's been a number of amendments over the years to the redevelopment plan. Probably the last significant one was in twenty fifteen with the addition of the retail component. And then there were some other minor ones here or there. But it's been a, it's been a very successful project. There's approximately one hundred and thirteen acres left to be developed. And I think what's really unique about Cedar Bridge is when you look at it in the overall context of the township, it's one of the few sites that you can still get an eighty percent impervious coverage from CAFRA because of our previous approvals. Right now, if you're developing in the township and you're in a CAFRA zone east of the railroad tracks, you're really limited to those areas that are in the town centers, the CAFRA town centers where you can get eighty percent. So this is a really unique opportunity for the growth, growth of the township. I know I've done a lot of studies for developers in areas outside of those designated areas, and you can only get thirty percent impervious coverage in those other CAFRA zones, even being in the suburban planning area. So Cedar Bridge represents, I think, a unique opportunity for the township to continue with the commercial growth. And like I said, there's been nine hundred thousand square feet developed here so far. So what's promoting a lot of these changes, there's been, there's been a lot of folks that have come in and talked with Cedar Bridge, that had some different ideas, different uses that were not on the, you know, in the permitted use schedule. So that was one thing, and giving kind of the shifts, the market conditions. We wanted to update some of the permitted uses, such as the medical office and possibly hospital. Cedar Bridge has been in discussion with some people that have been promoting the idea that there might be an opportunity to do some type of a medical facility here, you know, such as a pediatric center. I know right now, you know, everybody, I guess, has to go out to the coast, you know, and that isn't offered at Mama South. So that's one of the uses that we wanted to include. Additionally, the redevelopment plan that was adopted in twenty fifteen was never incorporated into the DA1 zone. The DA1 zone is really the zone, the zone ordinance that governs development at Cedar Bridge. So a lot of those redevelopment regulations were not incorporated into that. So what I, you know, what I've done here is I pulled, you know, I brought a lot of that stuff that wasn't in the DA1 zone and have put it in here. Also, I assume you've got a copy of the draft DA1 ordinance. Also, some of those changes were summarized here within the redevelopment plan. And also, there were also a number of proposed changes to the bulk density and yard with similar uses. I think historically, too, a lot of the applicants that have come in in Cedar Bridge have requested variances, which the board has typically granted, and we thought it might make sense to loosen some of that up, since everyone was asking for variances for some of those setbacks. And I think that was generally the gist of all the changes that, or the broad overview of what we were looking to change.
Excuse me, Chairman. Chairman is Terry.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, I have one question, Mr. Sterns.
Sure.
Tom, one of the recommended changes in the plan is a reduction in the minimum lot size from three acres to two. If you can give a little rationale on that.
Yeah, I think the rationale was, what if somebody wanted to come in and do a smaller building? Like a smaller office building, that was the thought behind it, that they, you know, they could do that, and that was the rationale.
Mr., what's with the parking in the, for medical facilities? It's Mr. Herzl, Chairman, my camera's not working. For medical facilities in the industrial park, well, what are you keeping the parking radius? Ratio?
Hang on a minute. Parking for medical. Well, we had a lot of different uses in there. Hospital, we put in a two spaces for every bed. And that basically included patients, staff, and visitors, but it also excluded MOB and outpatients. They'd be calculated separately. And I went back, I looked, I previously worked on the New Princeton Hospital that was finished in twenty twelve. I went back to that and the Capital Health one in Pennington, Hopewell. They're the most recent, I think, greenfield hospitals in the state. Well, there's also the one down in Voorhees. But I went back and looked at those and studied those parking, parking numbers, you know, and tried to, you know, figure.
Why does Kimball have in Lakewood?
I have no idea.
Do you know what would be similar to Kimball or not?
It really depends on what they propose. What would come in is, what's proposed. I know, I know from both of the projects in Princeton and in Pennington that they had to go back and add more parking. What happened was there was so much more outpatient and clinical diagnostic work in there that drove a larger outpatient population to the hospital.
My personal opinion, now you can see me, my personal opinion is, I think, I don't know what the board would think about it, but I think before we vote on a recommendation to add medical facilities there, we should have some kind of number, knowing what the parking is. The industrial park, you said that there's a hundred thirteen acres left, there's a lot of traffic over there. We have to make sure for medical that we have enough parking for whatever use you want to bring in there. I think we should have some kind of number.
From Mama South?
What works in another medical facility, what should be the, what the ordinance that we're gonna pass over here, that should be the number that we need.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, and this is Ally Rennert speaking. I think that we need some, like a comparison to understand what we're voting on tonight, and if it's gonna work.
Does Kimball work, or does Kimball not work? I don't know. I usually, I go to visit people, the parking lot is full always. I don't even know if that works.
And how many beds does Kimball have? And some of it is outpatient, some of it is inpatient.
And to the chair, are we allowing ambulances to go through on that road there? There's no shoulder for people to pull over if you're putting in an ambulance service, or whatever it is, a medical emergency service. I don't know if the road there could sustain that type of traffic.
Well, it's a four-lane boulevard for both Avenue of the States and boulevards of America.
With the divider, but no shoulder.
Why would you need a shoulder?
If you have ambulances coming by, where are people pulling over to?
I think the top shoulder, certainly on Cedar Bridge. Pine Street, yeah.
Avenue of the States, I don't think there's any shoulder there. It's a two-way, two-lane speedway.
No, that's correct. It is, it's two-lane with a median and a middle and no shoulder. Wouldn't the cars just pull over to the right lane?
If they're able to, what if they're not able to?
Mr. Sterns.
Yes.
It's Mr. Herzl again. Don't get me wrong, I think it's very beneficial to have medical facilities. The town is growing, we need more medical facilities, not less, for our town. We just have to make sure the parking works, the ambulance could get in if it's an emergency, we have drop-offs. Not just approve a change without knowing.
Well, each applicant's gonna come in, whoever that might be, whether it's a medical office or something more substantial, and they're gonna have to come in with their site plan and have a traffic study and, you know, and you'll look at that in detail at that time. I mean, I'm also happy to give my research on the two hospitals to Terry Vogt, and if he wants to go through it and, you know, see what he thinks. I mean, I'm happy to share that with Terry. Through the chair.
And Mr. Stern.
So.
Mr. Bruce Stern.
Mr. Bruce, well, this is Tom Sterns. Hey, Tom, we haven't spoken. And it was nineteen ninety-eight, it was not nineteen ninety. It's only twenty years old, not thirty. So Terry, I guess my, you know, the board members are raising questions, and I guess my question to you is, you know, process-wise, procedurally, is now the time that we as a board should be raising these things, or is it, as Tom Stern said, my long-lost cousin, that these are issues that will be vetted at a later junction?
I'm gonna give you the politically correct answer, Bruce, and that is both. Obviously, as much teeth within reason that you can get in the ordinance, that's gonna give the board leverage, particularly in the contentious application. I like the idea of the board having the opportunity, even if something meets the letter of the law, to have leverage to say, look, you know, even though it meets the formula, you have these concerns. I think that's easier with the zoning board application than it is with planning board. Planning board, if it's a permitted use, you're kind of hamstrung a little bit.
Bruce. Yes. This use is, you want to allow medical in the park. There's so much more business is going on over there. It's multi-use. It's not just a hospital that we can know, a hospital needs one per every one hundred fifty, whatever. Here, there's a lot of different uses over there. We have to make sure it works. I think you may need more parking. I think that we should go ahead and approve medical there, but we should make sure that we have enough parking. And I think you need more than about a hospital.
Yeah, I think we only talked about one element of medical, which is hospital. My read of the draft amendment, Tom, was that for medical office, you are proposing the one space per one fifty square feet? Is that correct?
I was proposing what you already have in your ordinance, eighteen eight oh seven.
Right.
And that's, I guess that's, and that's what, six point six per thousand, I think? Did I get my logic correct?
We're saying the same thing. Correct. So, you know, that is one of the recommendations in there as far as medical offices. I think there, you know, if there's a way that we can compare what local hospitals are using on the same per-bed basis, I think that'll help a great deal. I don't have that information.
Your current ordinance only requires one space per bed, if I recall correctly.
All right, so you'd be doubling that as far as hospital?
Yes.
Okay.
I think with all that extra area, we should consider adding on to the parking if we're able to. You have that extra land, why not make it as safe as possible?
Why not go into multiple height?
I think I saw that in the plan about encouraging garage parking.
A lot of the hospitals are two or three stories, the parking.
I think that's in the plan, is it not, Tom?
It is.
Too many people talking, I didn't hear the question.
I'm sorry. The multiple story with encouraging parking as part of structures, I think that's in the plan.
Well, one of the.
I saw that reference.
One of the new uses is to allow a parking garage, a parking structure.
Right. Yeah, we wanted to encourage parking structures, but yet I think we realized that maybe the market isn't there just yet for a parking structure, that we wanted to encourage them.
Mr. Sterns, what else besides medical are we proposing with this ordinance? Any changes?
A new use, use changes.
Excuse me one minute, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, who's speaking?
John Jackson.
I'm sorry, you were fading out. Okay, Mr. Jackson, go ahead.
There's a table that's on page fifteen through like eighteen.
Yes.
That everybody can look at, that gives a summary of everything that's added. Like Mr. Vogt alluded to, there's a lot more than just allowing medical. It's changing buffering, it changes a lot of area, allows heights of ninety feet. Setbacks, I believe, are affected, impervious, so there are a lot of changes. But really, I think the board's question is whether this is inconsistent with the board's vision for the uses that are allowed in that zone. It's the governing body's responsibility to make the zoning criteria, the number of parking spaces, setbacks, et cetera. That the master plan really provides the vision and the overall idea. So I would ask Mr. Stern, the planner, you know, what provisions in the master plan are affected by this? That talk about this particular zone, and how is this consistent with that vision laid out in the master plan? I think that's really what the inquiry should be.
Mr. Jackson, while I have you here, what is the DA1 zone, or DA1? Can anybody explain it more for the board?
I could. It was a zone that was established for Cedar Bridge back, I think when this plan was amended back in, I think, two thousand. And that was the designation it was given. I don't know what the DA stands for, but that's what they made this zone, and it included, you know, the whole, the whole site, the four hundred some acres. It included the baseball stadium. You know, included, included everything.
How much of the industrial park does that include?
None. No, it's just the, it's just Cedar Bridge. It's unique to Cedar Bridge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And to answer your question, Mr. Jackson, I would, you know, I went through the master plan and everything, and as far as I can see, it's, you know, everything's consistent. The smart growth plan that was written in twenty thirteen, the twenty fifteen redevelopment plan was an outgrowth of that, and that was consistent with that. I would suggest that, you know, we've had consistency all along here.
Okay, now, Ally, thank you for bringing up.
While.
You're highlighting it.
While we're on the subject of parking, I just want to commend Mr. Sterns and whoever prepared this for being thorough, because the board will recall that the rest of the ordinance does not have parking, like daycare, and I'm not sure about banquet halls. Now, this proposed change is only going to apply to daycares within the DA1 zone.
Correct.
However, it's a starting point for the rest of the zones in the township that also permit things that did not previously have any parking requirements anywhere in the ordinance.
Right, you're so right, Ally. And also hospitals, I see they give four spaces for every bed.
That's a lot.
That includes the staff and visitors, but not everybody has business at the same time, so it is. The questions that we brought up, thank you, Ally, for bringing this up right now on the screen. I think they do address the parking, but one at a time, please.
How do you know that? Ally.
Mr. Rennert.
Sorry, how would you know that once, four spots for every bed is sufficient? Including back office, office space, I mean, there's no way to know, unless we have something to compare this to.
Well, I looked, like I said before, I looked at the Princeton Hospital, and I looked at the Capital Health Hospital, which are two recent greenfield hospitals that were developed. I went through and looked at all the parking tabulations, and kind of shook it all up in a box, and I came up with the four, but that excludes medical office buildings, et cetera. You know, if you take a campus where you start to incorporate medical office and other things in there, fitness centers, and then that bed count can go up.
Yeah, I see Ally brought up skilled nursing. It's only one space per bed? What's the rationale on that one? No visitors, no nurses?
That's pretty consistent. You know, I went and looked at a lot of different ordinances, other ordinances, and that seems to be a consistent number. I think, I'm trying to remember now, I think your ordinance is point, is it point seven five, if I recall, or is it one? Some were lower, I've seen some lower, some slightly higher. I went with one. Through the chair.
Yes, and Mr. Stern?
Yes. It's.
Mr. Bruce Stern.
Mr. Bruce Stern. So I have two comments. I mean, the Cedar Bridge development is an unmitigated success. It's adding jobs, it's adding good jobs, it's adding ratables. I guess when the tax abatements burn off, it's gonna add a lot of ratables without having, you know, residential schools. So I think in general, we should be deferential to the people who put it together. They seem to have done a very good job. That being said, I'm looking at the website, and it says modified six hours ago. Tom, when did you submit all of this information to the township? I did, personally, I did not submit it. Cedar Bridge submitted it, and I don't know when that was exactly. Ally may know, or I don't know who it got submitted to.
It would have been submitted to the committee or to the clerk quite some time ago for when the committee had their first reading. When I received the ordinance from the committee directing the planning board to review that ordinance, I did not realize that the study itself was not attached to that packet until a member of the public asked me for it today. So I reached out to the clerk. So I reached out to the clerk and received the study itself today.
So so the the six hours on the website is accurate. This has only been on the website for six hours.
For the study, correct.
Right, okay, so I mean, my bottom line is, I think we should approve this and move forward, but gosh darn it, next time, we have something simple, we, and I'm not tagging you, Ali. I'm just saying that we have a lot of questions, and six hours right after Passover is not adequate time for us to form reasonable opinions. So I would say move forward, but the next time, give us a little bit more notice so we can do our job.
Bruce, Bruce, this is Lady Isaacson. What do you mean move forward? What what does that mean?
I mean, the township is up for second reading. They're looking for us to approve this or not approve it, or give them some wise counsel.
It's not not approved, to recommend, recommendation.
To recommend. So I would say we should recommend we move forward on this based on the fact that Cedar Bridge has done a very good job up until now. And and I know.
Bruce, you're kind of contradicting yourself. You 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 just said on one end that we only had six hours to look at it, and yet you're recommending to move forward. I'm, I I don't, that doesn't jive with me. We we haven't had enough time to look through this and see that, you know, everything in here is as it should be. I I I don't think we should move forward on this.
One second, Lady.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
One at a time, one at a time.
Mr. Chairman, this is important. I spoke to Harold Hensel, uh, right before our meeting. He advised me that this is taken off the agenda for next meeting. Uh, so he said, we have another meeting, so if the board wants to study this, digest it, there's enough time before the second reading, uh, that that.
Absolutely, absolutely, that is my.
Uh, Ali.
Something to be to be to be.
One second, one second, please.
Having had time to look at it.
Ali, do we have another meeting before the second reading from the township?
When's the second reading?
I think the twenty fourth.
We have a meeting on the twentieth that has.
Yeah, I think it's the the twenty second, Chairman, is the the second committee meeting.
Okay.
Through the chair, before we start, um, moving, uh, moving yes or no on this, I just, I'd like to talk to the fellow board members, uh, as well. Yes, and I agree with, I agree with Bruce Stern that that the Cedar Bridge development area has been a tremendous success. And, um, I I I, you know, it it's great what's going on there. We are adding additional uses. What has not been a tremendous success coming out of that area is Pine Street. Pine Street is an absolute disaster. Um, Pine Street, there there are, there are basically three roads that lead into um, this the area, right? We have the two big roads, the Cedar Bridge and New Hampshire, which can handle the traffic. But when you have the traffic coming from, I guess, the west side of town, which a lot of the traffic does, this is more to the east side of the town, the traffic is coming down Pine Street to Route nine. It's an absolute disaster all day. This plan, anything that we change in the Cedar Bridge area, and I want to change, and I'm all for changing the setbacks and changing the height of the buildings, adding parking garages, I I I love the plan. And I put in a hospital there. It must come along with a a a a master plan for the traffic on Pine Street. We have to deal with the entirety of what this little city is going to be like over there. And I'd like to see, I mean, whether it's traffic lights, whether it's turning lights, I don't know what to do about Pine Street. But right now, it's one lane in each direction, cars making left turns on every side street coming into Pine Street. It's it's an absolute disaster.
Hey, Mr. and Ali, a medical facility is going to produce a lot of traffic of Pine Street.
I mean, I I will not support any change to anything going on there um, without, uh, you know, a comprehensive plan in the area. With a comprehensive plan in the area, I would like to support this plan.
Okay, so early, uh, the township's going ahead with it on April twenty second. They cannot get any comprehensive plan by that time for us to see on the roads.
Well, the township could postpone, um, doing what they want to do over here until they figure out what they want to do on Pine Street. I mean, we have to do what we think is right, and the township committee will do what they think is right. They always look to us. I remember the mayor always said, Mayor Coles, that he will never go against, he has the right to, but he won't go against the planning board if we feel something is right. Um, he, that's why we're here, to advise of what we see is right or wrong.
I I think the whole, all, everybody on the board agrees that it's very beneficial to have medical facilities allowed in Cedar Bridge development. We just want to make sure that the traffic works, the parking works, the traffic on Pine Street and all the other streets over there. Uh, with that.
What about banquet hall?
Um, Moshe?
Yeah, what what about the parking by the banquet halls? That's that's a concern as well.
Well, the, let me, um, the the banquet, the banquet hall is only, it it's, there's no separate freestanding banquet hall. There's a banquet hall or a conference center i- as approved as part of a hotel. So you have the parking, I think we had eight per thousand just for the banquet hall, but if it's part of a hotel, you have.
Uh, Mr. Mr. Stern, you hear us? Somebody for, okay, uh, this issue came up, uh, more than once already. When a hotel has a banquet hall and they have outside parties coming to the banquet, the hotel is full. We're only accounting for the parking for the hotel rooms, and then somebody makes, uh, some kind of affair in the banquet hall, now we need double amount of parking. I don't think our ordinance addresses that issue.
Okay, well, I I put in eight to thousand, uh, in the ordinance.
Eight to thousand square feet?
Yeah, eight eight spaces per, um, um, thousand square feet, yes.
Uh, honestly, in a, on on a synagogue, or I I think it's one per hundred square feet where people congregate.
Well, I mean, you're certainly, certainly.
Banquet hall.
Certainly welcome to, uh, you know, recommend a change to the numbers.
My my personal opinion, eight per thousand is a little on the low side. Mr. Renner, what do you think on a banquet hall?
I honestly don't know. I would need something to reference. I have no idea.
Okay. I think it's very low, and we should, uh, consider, uh, moving it. I mean, to review exactly what similar places would be. This would be a precedent for other locations as well. Mr. Renner, just for your benefit, eight per one thousand and a a regular, an average-sized banquet hall is about, um, I believe, twelve to fifteen thousand square feet. For a twelve thousand square foot banquet hall, you're talking about ninety-six parking lots.
And and you could put in there four, five hundred people, if I'm correct.
So you're saying it doesn't, it doesn't work? Yeah, but you know, some advantage apparently also like kitchen space.
Inadequate.
Yeah, but some of that is kitchen space, hallways, I don't know. Okay, whatever, I I honestly don't know.
Okay, um, where do we go from here? Then we have a lot of loose, uh, loose ends over here. I think an all fairness to the board, we should push.
I I would make, I would make a motion on this, Mr. Stern, to to, uh, to push this off.
Well, through the chair, before we make motions, can I just?
Mr. Flanspall, Mr. Flanspall.
If if we're going to push this off through the, to the planning board hearing, which which is, which is right before the next township committee meeting, uh, where they're, where they're proposing to have a second hearing, I would just, um, I would suggest that, uh, Mr. Sterns takes a look at some of the uses that we're not that familiar with, um, that don't come before the board often, like the hospital use, the hospice use, the, um, the skilled nursing facility, you know, these types of uses don't really come before the board that often. We're used to office buildings, medical buildings, shopping centers, schools, those are not really used to. So, Tom, if you could take a look at, um, uh, those types of uses, not only in Lakewood, but also in surrounding areas.
And I think banquet halls also.
Yeah, well, I'm going to get to the banquet halls in a second, but.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, Tom. So, uh, for those particular uses, if if you could show us, if you can give us some comparable, um, some comps on those, so to speak, and tell us what works. And really, I think, I mean, me personally, I don't think we're hearing that the board's really, um, objecting to any of the proposed uses. We just need more parking. That's the bottom line. So I think taking a look at our, I think taking a look at our ordinances, um, isn't really sufficient, just increase it. Whatever the ordinance says, maybe just increase it a little bit, because I know the master plan calls for increased parking. Um, I don't know that that was ever carried through to the ordinances, um, or all the ordinances, I should say, but the master plan certainly falls for increased parking on every use virtually. So just increase the parking, um, because you can never have enough parking. And, um, regarding the banquet hall, also take a look at the, you know, the the wedding halls maybe that they have in town and some other places, and let us know, let us know what works, you know, because we don't want people, last thing we want is people parking on the streets, you know, to go to a party. Um, and, uh, especially if you have a hospital there or other types of uses, it's going to be really, it's just going to obstruct um, the medical uses and everything else. So, you know, take a look at that, too. Just give us a lot of parking. I think that's, personally, that's, that's what I would like to see. Give us more parking.
And when's your next hearing?
The the. The twentieth?
The twentieth.
Okay.
Are you available that evening?
Um. Uh. Yes, fortunately, I am.
Okay.
I I would also recommend, Mr. Chairman, now, either Mr. Boe or Mr. Stern, uh, provide some ITE information about, uh, what 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 the Institute of Traffic Engineers at least says is the appropriate parking criteria for banquet halls.
Okay.
Right, Tom, if you can make that part of your analysis, please, that'd be helpful.
Okay, um.
You could do something with.
One at a time, please. Ali Renner.
If you could do something with the Pine Street, um, as well, if you could take a look and see if you come up with any recommendations for that 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 street that feeds in.
Well, I mean, I mean, my, you know, my glib, my glib answer would be, it probably needs to be widened to four lanes. I don't, I have no idea if there's right, you know, there's even right of way there to do that. Um, I mean, that's just me talking off the top of my head.
Okay.
Terry could probably, uh, uh, have a more knowledgeable response than me, but that that's just my, just.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Jackson. Mr. Jackson, how do we continue? We we need a motion to advance it, or?
Well, I, if I'm hearing the board, if they want a little bit more information and they want to digest this and they're maybe have some more deliberation. Mr. Renner said he wants to discuss it with his fellow board members. That would have to be at a hearing. Um, you know, Mr. Stern, uh, somebody has to make a motion to, uh, or the chairman can take control of it and say, I'm going to table this until next hearing to get the additional information we want, or someone can make a motion.
Yeah, I I rather not table, I rather get the consensus of the board. So I would ask for a motion or to vote on it tonight or to table it to the next meeting.
Through the chair, can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes.
So, Tom, you were at, I imagine you were at the township committee meeting virtually. I don't think any of us were.
No, I I wasn't. I didn't, I didn't attend that.
Does there anybody on this call who knows what concerns the township committee raised, or?
No, I wasn't there.
Okay. I have to draw my motion.
Yeah.
Um, Mr. Chairman, Lady Isaacson.
Yes, yes.
Um, a question for John. John, could we recommend to the committee to delay their second hearing, their second reading?
Well, yeah, but that that would effectively not be an approval of it. It would be effectively not voting on it. If you don't vote on it and the committee goes forward, then, um.
I know, I just, I just feel like there's this rush that we need to read it and approve it by a certain day because they're going to read it regardless. Why, why can't we suggest as part of the motion that they, uh, that they delay the second reading of it?
I thought the statute required thirty-five days or forty-five days. Maybe Mr. Stern, the planner, can clarify that, but I thought on a redevelopment plan amendment, uh, the the board had thirty-five days to review it.
Um, I'm not, I I forget, John, to be honest.
Yeah, I I could take.
I think thirty-five is the number, John. I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Mr. Stern told me that the the committee's not taking action, uh, before our next meeting. So we we do have time to talk about it.
Yeah, Mr. Mr. Isaacson, I think we should move it to the twentieth. And if we feel we should remove it further, we'll we'll know then what the law requires and we can move it further. Is that okay?
If you don't mind, look into that to see if we can recommend that they, uh, you know, that they delay the second reading until we, uh, come to take consensus.
Okay, but I think right now the motion should be that we're moving over as of now to the twentieth.
We can certainly recommend.
I want to put this up on my screen if I can. Let me just, uh, share a screen for a second if I can.
Mr. Chairman, timetable for one second.
Yes, how are you, honey?
Very good. I'm trying to be quiet for a while.
Yes.
One, two more items that we need to discuss is that they wrote, uh, daycare, special education, and adult daycare in lieu of a bus drop-off. They want to provide a space for vehicular drop-off. I think that's going to create even more traffic. Uh, we should require it to have a bus drop-off unless the board grants a a variant for that where where it's needed. That's one item, and they indicate they want to sh- allow shared parking with the stadium if an agreement even with the municipality. I think that that we should add that any, if if such agreement goes into place with any particular building, you need to have proper lighting and a walkway going to and from the site. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I I would ask for a motion right now to table it to the twentieth.
Through the chair, this is, this is Justin.
Yes.
I'll, um, I'll I'll move it to table to the twentieth, but I just, uh, you know, just to reiterate the time that he should just take into, take our comments into consideration, including Mr. Sable's last comments about, you know, looking at the bus drop-offs, you know, maybe when it would be appropriate, when not appropriate, you know, things like that.
Okay, do we, thank you, Mr. Ju- Justin, and we have a second.
Lady Isaacson, I I'll second it.
Okay, roll call. I don't know. Everybody's muted. No. Ali, Ali, you muted yourself.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I'm sorry, my computer is being really, really slow. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable?
Yes.
Mr. Flanspall?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzell?
Yes.
Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson?
Yes.
And Mr. Raitz? Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Before we move on, was there any public comment, Ali?
Uh, Mr. Jackson, I'm going to let you address that. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, on on these types of matters, there's no public comment. You're not voting, voting on an application, you're performing a, uh, an advisory function. The public comment is, uh, for the, for the committee portion where we're.
Um, Mr. Jackson, I I just, Mr. Jackson, it could be your, your, your rights. I do know that the township committee, when they wasn't at applications, they say that the publisher commented at the planning board meetings. These applications, so I've heard that before from them, so I I don't know who's right and who's wrong, but maybe you gain.
In Cops, where Cops says explicitly, I just sent it to Ms. Morris, uh, from what I mean, I I just read, I'll send it to you. I can bring it up on the screen if you want right now.
Believe you.
Okay, let's let's continue.
The board from accepting public comment if you want to, just make a motion and, uh, if if the, you know, if the majority of the board is in favor of that, there's no reason why you can't hear public comment. I'm just saying that, you know.
Yeah, I think we should hear the public comment if we hear it at the next meeting when we have more information. Not now. That's a waste of time.
Is there a way to get a hard copy of the ordinance before the next meeting?
Um, you mean the study?
Yes, of the study that we're supposed to vote on.
Mr. Sterns, could your office mail copies of that study to the board members that would like a copy?
Mr. Sterns, are you here?
Um, that's you.
You're asking me?
I'm sorry, yes.
Yes. I could, I could, well, I could email PDFs to everybody. I I I don't know if I have everyone's, uh, Ali, if you can give me the email address, I'd be glad to.
Hard copy.
It's through the chair, it's time table.
We would have a meeting, a regular meeting.
Through the chair.
Yeah, fine.
Yes.
Mr. Stern, most members would like, or a lot of members would like a hard copy if it can be mailed out.
Oh, hard copy.
A hard copy to be mailed out at least, uh, ten days before the twentieth, then we can review it. Mr. Sable?
Yeah, and ten days before the twentieth, I mean, he has to prepare everything in four days.
Okay, whatever, give me a week, give me a few days, not six hours, not.
About six hours. I I'm not, I don't know if I'm going to change the document. I could mail it out.
Don't have to change it, we just, it.
Yeah, I just.
Man said it's helpful to read it by hand. We're old-fashioned, Tom.
Yes, I know that, um.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
My my point is that, I don't know, I would should ask Mr. Tom Stern right now if he can have everything, all the research that we requested him to do, ready in four days. If that's even feasible.
He just said not. He said it was.
That's probably not going to happen realistically. I've got a lot of things going on the next.
The point of our vote now that we're pushing it off in the next week, we're not going to get any smarter in two weeks from now. Maybe we should do automatic now uh for a month from now, two months from now.
Well, I'm not sure Mr. Sterns is offering to provide more written documentation. I thought that he would be mailing the current study as it is to the board members so that you have it for the twentieth, as well as coming on the twentieth and giving you verbal answers to some of the questions you have about parking adequacy.
My question is, does he have enough time to do the research to get back to that?
No, he's not going to have that new information back to you in four days. He would be presenting it verbally on April twentieth.
But let's do this. Tom, if you could have. For our meeting, like the eighteenth, that would be very helpful. And in the meantime, we can get hard copies of everything that was downloaded or uploaded six hours ago.
I, I think we spent enough time on it, but not listened to it. Let's continue.
Let's move on. Thank you.
Okay, Allie, do we have any other ordinances for review?
Uh, yes, we do. We have ordinance.
Thank you, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Good night.
Twenty-one dash oh-two-three.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-one dash oh-two-three, which proposes the banning of cannabis businesses in Lakewood Township.
Okay, I think it's pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second on that?
Our second is Justin.
Second.
Just.
Before we go ahead with that, can I, to the chair, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, who's this? A motion. Yeah.
We don't know how the state is going to do things. We, as, as a member of the municipal alliance, we had heard uh that the state is going to give tax money to only municipalities that are allowed to do business with cannabis within it, so we, we might stand to lose a lot of money over time based on that. We sort of don't know all the information we need to know. Can this be a limited uh refusal to, to have such businesses for, let's say, five years rather than a permanent type of refusal?
And Mr. Mr. Raitzick, wh- I have a question to you. Why can't the township come in a year or two from now and say we would like to reverse and uh reverse the decision not allowing it, changing this, changing it?
Well, the. Yeah.
I don't think it's indefinite that it cannot be reversed.
I, I just know that the governor has, was very much pushing for this in order to get tax revenue, and he might frown upon people uh completely wiping it out at this point while he's under uh trying to push it very strongly.
Well, this, this does not make marijuana possession or use illegal. It just says from a zoning standpoint, uh, you can't have it uh distributed, manufactured, et cetera, in Lakewood. There are lots of places where zoning doesn't allow things. That, that just means it's not the right place for it. Uh, that doesn't mean you can't do it other places. So you, you're not banning marijuana. You're, you're just banning it uh from a zoning consideration. And I think to Mr. Herzl's point, the governing body knows what's going on, and I think if there were negative consequences for Lakewood, I would, I would trust that they would adapt as is appropriate or make a stand as they feel is appropriate. So I, I think the only question is here is whether having cannabis distribution, et cetera, uh is appropriate in any zone in, in Lakewood in accordance with the master plan. I think that's what the only issue really is.
And Mr. Jackson, should the township would like, if we voted for it right now, they want to reverse it in a year. Can they reverse it? Or by us making?
Killing it and that will go back before the board and the board would uh determine whether they thought that was appropriate at that time, just like any other land use ordinance.
And then, okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second uh on the table uh to agree with ordinance to ban it as of now, and Allie, could you please go through a roll call?
I'm sorry, who was the second? I just didn't note it.
My second is Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Flansbourn. Uh, Mr. Garfield.
Yes, yeah, sorry, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
Yeah.
Mr. Flansbourn.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
I didn't hear you, Mr. Isaacson, I'm sorry.
He said yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Raitzick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, on to the public hearing. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are.
Okay, times step down, and we still have a quorum, right, Allie?
Yes, um, we did have one application that had an issue with getting their notice published in the paper on time. Um, I recommend we announce a carry to the next meeting, which is April twentieth for SP twenty-four oh-eight McTavish Partnership.
Okay, um, Mr. Jackson, would you like to make a announcement on that one?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry, I was just sending a, a message to Mr. Raitzick. So uh that is number.
Number two.
Esther, remember, and what was the date that was being carried to?
The twentieth.
Twentieth.
Members of the public, the advice number one on tonight's calendar, Esther, our past has been uh adjourned and will be considered on.
Mr. Jackson, not that one. SP twenty-four oh-eight McTavish.
Oh, I misunderstood. Uh, never mind. Esther Pascas is going to be heard next. So SP twenty-four oh-eight McTavish Partnership uh will be heard on the twentieth, the twentieth of April two thousand and twenty-one, six o'clock uh online format like this meeting. That will be uh republished in the newspaper. Anyone who got notices in the mail uh that will, will not be re-noticed by mail. You, you, you know, if, if you got a letter and you're responding, this is your notice that it's carried until the twentieth.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Allie, uh, on number one, I, I just got a text from somebody that he would like to log on, on the public comment and he can't log on. Is it open to the public?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that for the record. Okay, so on to number one.
Okay, so number one is SD twenty-four sixty-three by Esther Pascas. It's a minor subdivision. I'm trying to share my screen for you. A minor subdivision to create four lots from three.
Okay, Terry, would you like to go through the report when you get a chance?
Yes, I would, Chairman. Uh, I'm reading from our review dated March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, beginning at the top of page three, uh under Romanor one variance release. Uh, a minimum front yard setback is required for new lot two-point-oh-two. Uh, and aside, your setback is required for proposed new lot uh three-point-oh-two. Uh, and design waivers, a, a design waiver is required uh from providing street trees along Brew Street and Congress Street.
Okay, that's it.
That's it, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Who's the attorney on this application? Who's the engineer?
There's no attorney. Um, I believe Ms. Pascas is representing herself. Um, and the engineer is lines engineer.
It's not a corporation?
No, it's not. It's Ms. Pascas. I've unmuted Lynn and Ms. Pascas. And, and Ms. Pascas.
Okay. So who's here to testify in this application? Mr. Lines?
Yes.
Mr. Line. Okay, uh, Mr. Jackson, could you swear in Mr. Lines?
Your client here, Mr. Lines. I, I thought I saw a note in the plan review that she was supposed to have counsel, but uh she should be here to ask you questions, et cetera.
I see Mr. Is Mr. Pfeffer the attorney on this application?
No, she, the, um, Mrs. Pascas is here. I did see her name earlier.
Yes, I'm here.
All right. Let's have her sworn um as well. Um. Uh, Mr. Lines and Ms. Uh, I'm sorry, I'm.
Yes.
Pascas, uh, do you swear or affirm that the testimony will give before this world the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And Mr. Lines, you are proposed as a, as an engineer and a planner?
Yes, I am.
Ms. Pascas, this is your uh application?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Lines, why don't you tell us about the application?
Uh, we are proposing.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, John.
I, I, I missed the part about Mr. Vote, uh, Mr. Vote going through his letter. Did he do that?
Yes, he did.
Yes, I did, John.
Yeah, there's two variances on it. Okay, so Mr. Lines, please go through.
Yes, we're.
What's currently on the, one of the, one, uh, the two houses, I see?
Currently on the, on the lot, it's uh three individual lots right now. Um, the corner lot is lot number two. Uh, that's an existing house with a thirteen-point-four-foot uh front setback to Brew Street, uh, and there is a um detached garage in the rear that's three feet off the rear property line. The uh center lot, which is lot number three, the house is set almost to the back of the property. Uh, it has a rear setback of four-point-four feet, and it is over the property line on the uh, looking at the plan, on the uh left side by uh one-point-three feet. And then there's another house on lot four, which is uh set uh just um it, it conforming, but it's seven-point-six feet uh off the uh southerly property line.
So currently, there's three houses there. Is that correct?
Currently, there's three houses that have a variety of existing, existing variances.
And one says existing two-story. That's also a one-family house, right?
Yes.
It's not a two-family house.
No, no, right now they're all older one-family houses.
Three one-family houses, and you would like to make four single houses or, or two duplexes?
Four duplexes. Uh, and, and the intent is this is for the um, for the applicant's children to each have a duplex, you know.
So it's, it's two, two duplexes with four total houses.
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, the variances we're asking for, um, one is for the uh corner lot. Uh, we're requesting a fifteen-foot side yard setback to Brew Street. Uh, and again, that's currently thirteen-point-four feet, so it's uh in keeping with what's there. Um, also, on the other three corners, there are uh two new houses and one older house. They're all, those are also between ten and fifteen feet uh off the front, off the Brew Street property line. So, um, the new duplex will be in keeping with the rest of the houses in, on this intersection. Uh, the other variance we're asking for is for the space between the two duplexes uh to.
Zero, zero lot line.
Is, well, no, between the um, uh, between lot.
Oh.
I'm sorry, let me get my lot. Two-point.
Allie, thank you, thank you.
Point oh-one. Uh, yeah, right, my arrow is, we're requesting a five-foot side yard setback between those two. Uh, what we're really trying to do is, we're, the, the applicants are willing to have the buildings a little closer.
It's five total?
Rear yards are a little bigger.
It's five foot total or five feet each house, uh, house?
Five, five feet on each side of the line. I'm sorry.
So it's ten total?
Ten total instead of fourteen.
Oh, okay. The, the way you made it sound like it, it's five total.
Yeah, I apologize.
Okay, just correct it for the record.
Yes, and then uh the other, the last side yard uh will be the conforming seven-foot side yard setback on the south side of the property.
Okay, a lot coverage, are you going over?
Nope, no other variances are required. And again, we're, we're cleaning up a number of uh non-conformities that are, that are existing.
So they, basically, your testimony is that all the variants are better than before or the same? You're not exact, no variances are, you're not creating any new variances or make it worse than before?
No, we're not making it any worse. Uh, and actually, we're, we're moving the one front yard setback we're requiring. We're going from thirteen uh thirteen-four to fifteen, so we're actually moving the house a foot.
Okay, and now, what's with, what's with garbage? The township?
Regular township garbage uh with a trash enclosure, uh, you know, for each uh, each house on site.
How many parking spaces for each uh?
Uh, we'll be proposing four for each unit, each lot.
Okay. Okay.
And that, uh, we've been through the letter and we don't have any uh.
You agree, you agree with everything in the letter?
Yes, sir. Are, are the base being finished? Uh, most likely, yes. For the tenant above or for uh other people? Will be for tenant uh of the, of the owners. So meaning not for the children themselves? It'll be for. No, no, the children are, the, the children will actually have the, the upstairs portion. Right, they'll, they'll be renting it out or whatever else it is to other people rather than for their same family. Correct.
Yeah, the, they're accounting for on parking on that. They're giving four parking spaces uh for each unit. Do we have any other questions for any board members? Seeing none, I would open it to the public. Allie, do we have anybody for the public who would like to comment on this?
Uh, I have one email from the public. It's from uh Chaya Rubin. It says, "Good morning. As the homeowner of seventeen Congress Street across the proposed building site, I was worried about losing every shred of privacy I have with four houses possibly overlooking mine, especially since my master bedroom and another bedroom are facing the building site. I wanted to request it's possible that they turn the plans to face Brew Street if possible. That is besides for the fact that this plan is taking away all street parking from the block and adding tons of traffic, which I am also worried about. Turning the new houses to face Brew Street would alleviate that a lot as it is a quieter block with access on both ends to Route eighty-eight."
Okay, um, well, the, the, actually, uh, I looked on Google Earth today and I've been past the site several times. Uh, Brew Street almost always has cars parked on it from the uh commercial uses that are on South Park Avenue. Uh, there is right behind uh this property is a automotive repair yard that has uh quite a lot of onsite parking of uh cars being repaired that uh, and, and so Brew Street is, is basically, you know, parking both sides. Uh, the other, the other problem with rotating it, um it, it's just, you know, the way we're doing it, it keeps the side setbacks, you know, the house that's across the street on Bruce, it's ten feet off the, off the street, and the one across Congress, you know, the side of our building will basically line up with the side of their building. You know, e- either way, you know, you, you'd have a um you know, you're going to have a, a unit that faces this people's house.
Okay.
Is there any, have been trees or anything to give them more privacy, the people across the street? No, they, they don't have any trees on the property at all. Can they be put in? Can trees be put in? Uh, well, we, we can put trees up. We can put trees in. But I'm, but I don't, other than one or two shade trees, you know, they don't have shade trees.
Okay, any other questions for any board members? Seeing none, I'll close it to the public. I would ask for a motion on this application. Is everybody muted?
I, I would make a motion to approve it. However, I would like to ask that they put in trees facing that, that property across the street to give them more privacy.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Justin. I'll second it. Maybe the Shade Tree Commission could recommend something, good stuff for them to plant in front, enhance privacy as opposed to just the typical one or two little trees.
Okay, uh, Mr. Lines, would, would you agree to work along with our engineer to come up with some nice trees in the front to give privacy?
Absolutely. Okay.
Clarification, Chairman. Are we seeking input from the Shade Tree Commission?
I, I would like.
Don't, don't we always seek input from the Shade Tree Commission?
I'm on the Shade Tree Commission if that helps anything.
Oh, okay, so there you go. So, so you know, yeah, so they can consult with the Shade Tree.
We have a Shade Tree Ambassador present.
Yeah, and perhaps the Shade Tree Commission could come up with something a little more substantial in this case, you know, than just the two trees that are going to die in two months.
Right, definitely for, for privacy. That's the main point here.
That's great, that's great. Okay, we have a motion and we have a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Uh, yes, with the uh agreement of the Shade Tree Commission working with them.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sable left, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mr. Flansbourn.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Mr. Flansbourn?
I said, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
You're welcome.
Herzl.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Yes.
Mr. Isaacson.
Yes.
Mr. Raitzick.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good luck. Uh, now we'll finish with the public hearing. On to correspondents. We have one correspondent.
Through the, through the chair, this is Allie. I'm going to drop off.
Okay, let's just uh. Okay, let's just, Ali, just make sure we still have a quorum?
We do still have a quorum without Mr. Renner. We have one, two, three, four, five, six.
Through the chair, where's this correspondent?
12 Chestnut Street. It's a previous approval. They want to modify the previously approved setbacks.
Also, I, I recused from the original approval, so I'll have to recuse from this too.
Okay.
Okay, Ali, back to your list. Were we holding?
Mr. Renner is stepping down, Mr. Flansdowne stepping down. We still have Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Herzl, Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Ratzek, so we're good.
Okay, wow. Three, three minutes left. Okay, Terry?
Is it a big view or is it a quick reading? What's this issue?
It's pretty straightforward. I believe?
Brian's going to say it's de minimis, which is, go ahead.
There's a new review letter on it. It's an amended minimum front yard setback variance to Route 70. Terry, do you want to go through your letter?
Yes, indicated, I mean, Ali has a letter up. It's a very brief letter. Summarizes the requested changes. Comment one under zoning. A setback of 81.75 feet to Route 70 was granted. The current architectrials show slightly less, 81.4. That's a difference of less than half a foot. I would have to agree with Mr. Flannery on that, that that would fit de minimis. Continuing on, the side yard setback. You had a previous setback variance of 15.0 feet. That is now going to 14.0 feet. I'll defer to the board on that one. And finally, combined side yard setback of 86.55 was granted based on the current architectrials and features. That is decreased by slightly more than two feet, 84.54. Again, in the mid, in the de minimis range, in my opinion, but I don't want to steal Brian's thunder.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if I, when I looked at these plans and I asked Mr. Flannery to cover this, it said that it was based on architectural features and I did not see any before-after architectural plans with the, on file with the application. So I'm just curious, and I'd ask Mr. Flannery to address what exactly are the architectural features and why are they necessary and how do they impact the variance?
Yeah, that's number one. And number two, if the planning board voted something, why do they go and make plans that bigger than the planning board approved it and hoping to come back? How does that work?
All right, so Mr. Flannery, you hear the questions. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm testimony will give before this board be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey. Slice's professional engineer and professional planner. So the first question was, why did, why did an applicant come to the board and get an approval and then come back and ask for more? And what happened, first of all, just so we know where we are, the applicant did submit the plan showing where the property is. I believe the board would be familiar with it. It has frontage on both Route 70 and Chestnut Street. It's, it's near the intersection of New Hampshire Avenue. The, the plan, which was originally prepared by Sir Mont, took the property, which is unique in size, and fit a building in there based on the availability to get the parking and a, and a building that made sense for the area and provided a good ratable for the town. We gave all the testimony at that point of why this made sense. The, after we got approval, and it's typical process that especially where variances are required, you get a preliminary architectural plan, you kind of lock something in. You get your approval and then as part of resolution compliance, you go to the architect and the architect looks at it. In this case, the architect looked at the plan and thought, with a couple of de minimis variances, it'll be a much nicer looking building. And just for a little clarification for the board's edification on, on de minimis, it's kind of a relative thing. My dad's philosophy was with things, if it, it's no different if you're not going to notice going by in a bus. Well, obviously, going by in a bus on Route 70, you're not going to notice the difference of a couple inches. I would indicate that somebody walking by Route 70, looking really closely, would not be able to see the difference. And, and it's, it's just the windows and the, the type of finishes and stuff that were added to the building, added a few inches. And, and we're here asking for the relief, as Terry indicated, for the front yard setback of less than a foot, the side yard setback of approximately foot, which then translates to the combined side yard setback of a foot also. And if you look at where the building is located and if that's going to have any impact, it's certainly because the lot is longer on one side than the other. It's got business uses next to it. It has the dual frontage. It would certainly be my position that there is no adverse impact. And again, they would be C2 variances. We'd have to revisit the C2 variances that were granted for these variances initially. And the testimony at that time was that if you look at division statement, it says encourage development and redevelopment based on smart growth planning principles. Certainly, it's my testimony that this does that. The Municipal Land Use Law NJ SA 40,55 D2 under the purpose of the Act, encouraging municipalities to guide the action to appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals and general welfare. And, and this change of, this kind of magnitude doesn't really do that, but if the building looks nicer and nobody's going to notice that it's a little closer to the property line, I think it falls within there. The C2 variances, as I've indicated before, we need to show that it relates to a specific piece of property and this property with the dual frontage and its location and the existing size certainly fits that. The purpose of the Municipal Land Use Law would be advanced. I read that. The variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. It's my testimony, there's, there's no detriment to the public good. The variance will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And certainly, since it's so de minimis in nature, it's my testimony that that does that. And the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments. In my opinion, is since there are no detriments, and the benefit is the building's going to look nicer.
Mr. Flannery, can you confirm? I believe that the new intrusion into the increased variance is due to these little corners on the building. Can anyone confirm that?
All right, Ali, just for a second, I'm going to join by phone. I have to leave the drive, so I'll continue on the phone. But I'm going to turn off my computer, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much.
I believe Ms. Morgan had told me.
Yes.
Yes, they're little architectural features that were added to the end of the building to give it a little spatial differentiation and make it look nice. Obviously, if the board says we don't want them, the applicant would have to remove them from the plan and then you have just plain features as was previously?
I'm going to move, I'm going to come back soon. I have to take the voice somewhere, okay?
Brian?
Ali, Ali, just one second. Do we have a quorum without Mr. Ratzek?
We have Mr. Herzl, Mr. Stern, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Isaacson. We do not.
Okay, then I don't think we can continue.
I believe?
I'm on the phone, can you hear me?
Hey, back? Okay. Okay, yes, we hear you.
Yeah, he said he was just going to his square. He was going to stay live and he?
Yes, I stayed live, I did not have any interruption, yeah.
Okay, I apologize. Okay, please continue.
Well, that was, that was my testimony and I concurred with Ali where she had the plan up on a thing as you extra inches occur.
Thank you. Do we, any board members have any questions?
Mr. Taylor?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
So it's not a substantive question, it's a, it's really procedural question. This feels de minimis. This feels like what correspondence should be, but I'm just going to note, I think I've been on the board for like two years and in the first 18 months, I don't recall ever having anything decided on correspondence. But we've had three or four of these correspondence things that, one of them, I think, went for about an hour. So maybe it's not for discussion today, but John, I think we need to have a policy or discussion or something. And I'm not saying it's this application because this one actually does feel de minimis. But I don't want this to be the elephant, you know, nose under the circus tent or whatever the analogy is. But I don't want this to become the new normal, that we stick in very substantive discussions through correspondence. And I want to make clear to everybody, I don't think this is it. I think this is de minimis and we could do it, but I don't want this to become the new normal.
Okay, thank you.
I'll get off my soapbox now.
Okay.
We've heard?
We approve it.
And I know Ms. Morris's letter? Is there any letter that Ms. Morris sent?
I'm sorry, you're breaking up. We have to open it to the public, Mr. Jackson.
Yes.
Okay. Who said yes? Mr. Pfeffer? Oh, you're there?
I'm here.
Okay.
That there was no additional square footage being requested this evening. It was used for architectural changes to the site.